Work session and start off by asking the city clerk to provide a brief instruction on the scoring test provided to the council.
Just very quickly, so that when we're doing the actual scoring computations within the entire council, if we can get the scores all placed on this sheet for each of the groups, that would be ideal, but if not, then we would need nine of these with the score for each individual group. One or the other is fine.
Any questions from anyone? Okay, I'll start this out by, I'm going to stay out of the scoring on three of these groups, and that would be the wrestling groups, mainly because I have two grandchildren that both wrestle at Skyview, and one will be at Skyview, one will be at Sohigh, and they both do the Whalers. So I just don't feel comfortable in grading those particular ones. All right, we'll start out with, first one on will be Tanya Dickinson from Skyview Middle School Wrestling Boosters Club, and I believe she's going to be attending by Zoom.
Phone number ending in 400-4022. Are you Tanya Dickinson?
Hi, this, Tanya Dickinson is here at 4022.
Ms. Dickinson?
Hello.
Yes, we're, you're up on the Skyview Middle School Wrestling Booster Club application, and we have-
Okay.
You'll have five minutes to make a presentation, and might be some questions from the council.
Okay, it's pretty simple what we're doing. Skyview hasn't had a new influx of funding into their wrestling program in over 25 years, and the mats are, wrestling mats are extremely old, which does cause, the biggest concern is cause for safety when the kids are wrestling. They're not, you know, as lofty as they used to be, and they get moved around and battered and damaged at the school quite a bit. So we were able this year to purchase new mats, and we need a place to store them outside of the school, and that would be the Connex that I wrote about on the application, so they're off-site and they don't get damaged or moved within the school. So that's our goal, and Skyview last year had over 70 kids in its wrestling program, more kids than it's ever had, and we're just seeing nothing but growth. So we really want to give these kids the opportunity to train with good equipment and be able to keep the mats in good shape when we're not using them.
Is there any question?
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, any questions from anyone on the council? Ms. Chilson?
As far as just questions about the structure of the mini-grant program for staff, would that be presented at the end of all of the specific agencies presenting tonight, or do we ask those as those come up?
I'm sorry, I didn't-
Just if we have questions as far as the applicability of an application that we're getting presented on tonight, do those questions, do we give those to staff now, or do we discuss this among ourselves and staff after the end of all of these presentations?
No, you can go ahead and ask questions now.
So one of the questions I would have is, the mini-grant program specifically says that ineligible thing-
Use your mic, please.
The mini-grant program specifically outlines that programs not eligible for funding include costs associated with renovations, property acquisitions, or major expansions. That line item that says "property acquisitions," is that specific to land or any kind of non-consumable property?
Was that a question for-
I guess that'd be a question for staff. Or anyone that would be able to clarify that.
Through the mayor. I believe that the goal when this previous rewrite was done was for the council to be able to make those decisions during the assessment of the actual mini-grants.
Okay, so it's up to our discretion how we interpret that?
It's, the policy is as written in.
Okay.
Any questions from the council from Ms. Dickinson?
Thank you for submitting this mini-grant application. You indicated the purchase price at $6,500, and this is just a $1,000 mini-grant. Do you have the additional funds secured, and then can you talk about timing for the purchase and getting the Connex on-site?
Yeah, absolutely. The, we do have funding for the additional $6,500 from just a lot of fundraising through the community this past year, and we are sharing the cost of the Connex with two other wrestling groups to help spread it across, so we're not, you know, Skyview or Booster Club's not bearing the burden of all of it. And timing should be fall of this year, that the mats would arrive here in Kenai through Linden Transport, just in time for our season to start in January, and have a place to put them while we're waiting to unfold them at, or enroll them at Kenai, or, sorry, Skyview Middle School.
And is Linden donating the cost of transport?
Yes, they are.
Thank you, Linden Transportation.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Oh, thank you, Ms. Dickinson, and we will move on to-
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next one on the list is Barbara Olson and Mary Lou Wilcox from the Soldatna Library Friends.
All right, well, okay, I'm Mary Lou and she's Barbara. Okay. Well, it's a sewing project for the library, and we happened to recently kind of swapped our librarians around with Kenai a little bit, and the librarian from Kenai started a sewing project at Kenai and said, "Why doesn't Soldatna have this?" And we said, "Good question," and it came down to financing. So the library came to the Friends and said, "Would you support this?" And we said, "Well, it would be good to support that. It would take us a little bit of fundraising to get it going," but we saw the mini-grant and said, "Oh, maybe this could get it going by next spring." So what we'd like is six identical sewing machines. She recommended a very simple mechanical sewing machine, no computerized, and they're $200 each, and so this grant would help us buy five of them, and then the Friends would buy the six, and a cart to store them on, and then all the paraphernalia that goes with sewing, like scissors and thread and needles and all that. So we figure it's about a matching grant we would do. If we got $1,000 from you, we would put up another thousand and kick the program off and teach some life skills. She has some real nice, simple projects, a bag with a drawstring, so you do a casing, and pillowcases, and a play tent she thought would be kind of a fun thing. Maybe, yeah, anyway, some just simple, straight sewing projects. And also, I was very surprised at the Soldatna Library Friends, our membership that came forward and said, "We'd like to volunteer with that program. That would be great." So I'm seeing a lot of community support. We haven't really done a program where we had so much excitement within the Friends that said, "I'll come in and do that." So that's our little project, and Pam Joslin, our treasurer, is going to spearhead all the purchasing and make sure everything comes in on time. Any questions?
Mr. Rufford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, guys, so much for being here. This is an exciting project. The only question I have is why, why start it in, I thought I read it as July?
Well, we weren't sure exactly how things would arrive, so, you know, we thought, we're talking to Joanne Fabrics about maybe doing a purchase through her, through them, or it's online on amazon.com, two-day delivery, we can probably get six machines here. If that happens, that would be wonderful.
I was thinking, I have a lot of projects already slated for this winter, but if it was a wintertime thing, sewing doesn't sound half bad. But sewing in July didn't sound like, that's my only, that was my only question, because I thought maybe it would be a better winter thing. So you plan on having it be a more year-round type of-
We do.
Event. Okay.
We do, and I was trying to give the librarians enough time to get a syllabus put together and stuff, so I was just working with a little leisurely timeframe-
Understood.
I can understand it be a winter project.
Okay, good, Ms. Chilson.
Any other questions? Ms. Carey?
Thank you. I sure like the idea. What I was wondering is, when I think of, again, reading and those types of things, an individual can come in and relatively speaking, do that on their own and sort of know how to do it, relatively speaking, and I'm generalizing, I'm a teacher. Would this require a lot of, excuse me, how much assistance would this require from staff or other people to help people in this process?
I think once they understand the machine and how it works, that it probably could go pretty smoothly with, you know, I would think eventually they want to get them to read a pattern and put the pattern together, which takes a little bit of, you know, three-dimensional business going on in your head, so that I- Do you have something?
Envision it as being one of the community classes that they offer, perhaps on a monthly basis, where people sign up to come in, kind of like they do the jam-making, they've got the, or the fireweed jelly, you know, they open it to 12 people to come in, and they have all the equipment out. They do that every year, but this being more of a monthly program with a project, but it would be limited to 12 people, because two people using one machine. And under the guidance of, right now, Ryana Thurman, who has done that program over in Kenai very effectively, in fact, her age group went quite a bit lower. I used to take my granddaughter to it over in Kenai, and she learned how to sew at about seven years old, where I was frightened to let her use a machine, she was going right at it. And, and so it's been very successful over in Kenai, and it'd be a really nice opportunity to offer that kind of program here. Our current fundraising, we hold used book sales every month, and all that funding is pretty much committed to the traditional items we fund, like the summer reading program, the Thousand Books Before Kindergarten, the, well, we just, the Story Walk, and we just funded the remote, remote access-
Remote Wi-Fi.
For about six more months. So this is kind of out of, out of what we feel like we can support by what we bring in on book sales, but we feel we can support half of it, the $1,000, and if the mini-grant, $1,000, then that's the full project, and that's a nice addition.
Would it be correct to say that this is sort of an application of reading, in that you have to read stuff, and now you go and do it?
Oh, yeah, they, they, yeah, instructions for what's going to be worked on, and when the people come to the project. And we, we hope that it's very gender-neutral, so that there will be appeal to, you know, maybe some camping kind of items, stuff sacks and that kind of thing, not doll, just doll clothes or stuff.
Excellent, thank you.
Good.
Ms. Nelson?
An apologies if I missed this in your explanation, I was trying to read and listen to you at the same time. So in your, in your synopsis, it talks about classes taught by library staff and volunteers, and it sounds like from your presentation that you're talking with Soldatna Library Friends and some of these other folks that did it in Kenai would be, be teaching. Am I correct in that? Is this mostly volunteer-led, or would some of our city staff be also involved in the, in the actual teaching?
I think Ryanna will be the leader in the teaching, and probably the Friends will come in and help float around between the machines when people are stuck or confused.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? I do have one. If the grant was awarded, would there be a possibility the timeline could move up, so that instead of waiting until July, it could be, say, November?
Oh, by all means, yes, we can move that up.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
The next one on the list is Sheri Whackler, Peninsula Period Network, and you'll have five minutes.
Okay, so I had an idea about a month ago that period products are kind of essential. It's been something I've been thinking about, you know, for the last thirty-some years, but I have a daughter who is nine, and many of you know that most menstruators do start between the ages of nine and 12, and having access to them at school would be life-changing for, for a number of students. Not having access to them does sometimes inhibit women's access to education, and I think that if we could, for really minimal investment, change so many students' lives on the Kenai Peninsula. So the organization is dedicated to first and foremost supplying free, safe, hygienic menstrual supplies to all the Kenai Peninsula Borough School District schools. This grant in particular, we would, we would use to dedicate it to the Soldatna schools. There will be some, some schools that are outside the city, you know, that we're looking for other funding and other sources. The, the Borough is a possibility. This is my first grant application, so I'm, I'm not bringing to you, here's a bunch of funding, but we've just started. So the Seward also has one, City of Kenai, and if we could combine all those, I think that we could really easily supply the Kenai Peninsula School District with supplies inside the bathrooms for all the students, starting in October. Any questions?
Mr. Rufford.
Thank you, Sher. First of all, I guess I am ignorant, so I thought that this was something that schools had available already, and I'm hearing now that that is not the case. Was that ever the case, and now we've missed it, or?
There have been a few programs.
Okay.
The Rotary had a program where they were supplying supplies to schools that were off-the-road system. That was their particular focus. And there have been another couple of organizations that have collected supplies for those in need. And then nurses, of course, are a go-to for emergent situations. Kids are sent to the nurse's office. Now, that is wonderful, but with that, a lot of those supplies are provided by the nurses themselves or other school, you know, teachers and the like. We'd like to, to take that off of their plate. Also, I don't particularly like the concept of treating girls like they're sick by having to go to the nurse's office for something like that. I think every menstruator knows that having the supplies in the restroom themselves would completely change the dynamic of that. Now, obviously, if someone is in an emergent situation, we love that there's a nurse there. Now, I, when I first thought about this, I went and talked to the nurse at Soldatna L. She's the nurse for Soldatna L. in Montessori, where my, my daughter goes to school, and she's wonderful, Nurse Tammy. She has a whole room or bathroom in her office, and she said that the girls can come there, they can leave a bag there with supplies for themselves, extra pants, underwear, and their own supplies there. And she does have a small basket with some supplies that she said she tries to keep stocked. But again, if we were to facilitate this as a program with just, you know, ubiquitous access in all restrooms, it wouldn't have to be something that they have to think about. One of the other major factors of this is the ambassador program. We would like to have a dedicated ambassador in each school. I like the idea of a student being the ambassador to spread word about the access to the program, and also be the ones that restock and let us know when they need more for that restocking. Also, with that program, educating, starting the education portion of it, that's definitely a goal down the road that we want to do, is start de-stigmatizing periods and teaching women about their bodies, which is something that I've found, even as a 41-year-old human myself, I learn new things, and it's amazing. The human body is really fascinating. And as you said, there's a lot of people who just don't know things. And if we can change that, you can change people's lives going forward. It's just, it's fascinating to just talk about how it works. And there's people who've been menstruating for 20 years that don't know how it works. So if we could start with the ambassadors, I would love to do an education, sort of, just a relaxed period parties where, you know, you start to just talk about what it is and how, and, and access to other sustainable products as well is something that I'd love to start. There are organizations that would love to, to get sustainable products, like reusable products, to access to them, but in the parties, we could basically have all this products laid out, people can touch and feel and understand how they work, and do things like that. We've spoken to the library about doing programs there. There's also some church communities that would love to have us come in and do presentations. Now, that is going to take a bit more time to get underway, because we'll need to have a full program where we have our wording and exactly what, you know, we, a plan for that. So that's down the road. Right now and today for this grant, we're specifically focused on period products in the schools.
So just a follow-up, if I may, I want to make sure I am absolutely clear.
Mm-hmm.
Currently, in many Soldat, and maybe all Soldatna-area schools, there are not menstrual products in the restrooms currently?
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Hutchings?
I really do appreciate the fact that you brought this forward. I can remember when I was a 10-year-old girl, and I know, long time ago, but I can remember that we had a really great program at the school I went to at that time, that they would bring the mothers and the daughters in, and they had a film, they had a little book, because I had a mother that would not discuss this for anything, so, but she did take me to the class. And so I learned about all of this. But my sisters were five years younger, and we were not in an area that had a program like that in the school, and they were quite surprised one day, when they were at the beach, and they said, "What's going on?" You know, so this is really, really important. It's important for girls to not be embarrassed, to understand that this is a normal body function, and that there are products available at all times. So I think this is a great program. The other thing I would suggest, you might contact 100 Women Who Care and do a presentation to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I love every, there's so many different community organizations that have wanted to get involved already, and that's really exciting. And I think everybody either knows a menstruator is one themselves, and knows that despite what some people think, we don't always know when they come, and it could be a surprise, and it could be a traumatic surprise. And if we could avoid any adverse events for our, for our teens and young menstruators especially, which is one of the things that I do want to focus on, is elementary level. And I think that is missed in a lot of programs. People focus on teens, and there are a number of menstruators at the elementary level, and that is when you're first menstruating typically, and to have those available. There, as Linda mentioned, she had a class that she went to where she learned about things like this, and her mom didn't want to talk about it, and that's something that a lot of the previous generations like me had to deal with. But sometimes now, we have moms who do want to talk about it, but kids who don't necessarily want to hear their moms talk about it, which I think we've all come across. They'd rather have a peer be the one who is going, "Hey, this is, this is what a teapot is," and, and that's where I think the peer advocacy comes in really strongly.
Any other questions from the council? Saying none, thank you.
Thank you.
The next on the list is Lindsay Hannafold, hopefully I didn't mangle that too bad, Soldatna Whalers Wrestling Club. Lindsay, are you on the phone, on the Zoom?
Phone number ending in 4863. Is this Lindsay?
Anyone from the Soldatna Whalers Wrestling Club? Soldatna West, Soldatna Wrestling Club, are you on the line? All right, we'll move on to the next one. Are you with the Soldatna Whalers Wrestling Club?
Yeah, I am. Lindsay couldn't make it tonight, so she asked that I join in.
Okay. Well, we have yours up right now, so you have five minutes to make a presentation.
Okay, so I'm with the Soldatna Whalers Wrestling Club. This last season, we had over 170 wrestlers attend our program, and we work diligently trying to get every kid in our community involved in wrestling and make sure that it's available to everybody. And what we would like to use the grant money for, if we're awarded for, is help with our tournament fees. We like to offer all of our wrestlers free admission to our own personal tournament.
Any questions for Ms. Michael? Mr. Chilson?
Thank you. I see that you were awarded a $1,000 mini-grant for the same event, I believe, last year. If you were to receive a mini-grant again this year, is there any difference in how you would be utilizing that funding, or is it just going to be a repeat as it was funded last time?
So last year, we used our mini-grant to go towards our wrestling medals for all of our participants. We had over 600 registered wrestlers attend our event, and this year, we wanted to focus more on the wrestlers within our community, and so we wanted to offer a waiver for their tournament entry fee, which each tournament entry fee is $20 per wrestler.
Got it. I appreciate the efforts to make this more accessible for kids in the area. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions from the council? Saying none. Thank you, Ms. Michael, for your presentation. We'll now move on to the next one, and that would be Heather Daniels and Megan Weston, Kenai Peninsula Peace Crane Garden Trails.
Hi, I'm Megan. This is Heather, and we are with the Peace Crane Garden Trails. And for our grant this year, first of all, I want to say thank you so much. We were awarded the grant last year, which we used to pay for the cement for the crane statue that went in. So that was the majority of the funding, to be able to install that statue, which is installed. If you haven't got a chance to see it yet, please do, it's beautiful. And we'll also be doing a kind of a grand presentation, grand opening on September the 8th at 4:00 PM. We'll send out a specific notice about that, but if you haven't already received it, but you're all invited as well. So the grant for the mini-grant this year, we are in the process of using, cleaning up the trails, and the trails themselves are installed, kind of roughed in, but we're finishing them now. So the $1,000 would go towards topsoil, topsoil. It'd be about 24 cubic yards from ham and trucking and excavation and sterling. It would be brought in, it's about three feet on each side of the trail. To finish it, it prevents erosion, it gets a clean line. If you guys have the appendix one from the application, you can see the big difference in the way that the trails actually look with that topsoil on each side. It makes it safer for people, and also as we maintain them moving forward, there'll be a little more longevity in that. So, yeah, there's about 2,700 linear feet of gravel trail that's going to be able to be utilized year-round. be utilized year-round, and this will just help to, that next step in continuing to keep those maintained and also to finalize their space. So, any questions?
Any questions from the council? Mr. Rufford.
Thanks, Megan. The topsoil, is there anything going into the topsoil, or is it just there on the side? Or is it like grass, flowers, trees? Is there something being planted?
So for the most part, right now, it's just the topsoil itself. It gets placed, and it keeps, nothing is going to specifically be planted in it. There will be natural kind of movement in. Gravel from the trail will move out into that, and then also trees and plants will move into it, but it creates a barrier space moving forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. Chilson.
Just declaring a potential conflict of interest here. I live pretty much adjacent to these trails and would directly benefit from their improvement. Should I refrain from participating in the scoring of this item?
Actually, Mr. Rufford lives adjoining it.
Yeah.
He's even closer than you are. No, I don't see that as a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Next up on the list is Jeannie Acton of Barely Threaded Quilting, too.
This is my husband, Ken, and we own the quilt store in the Peninsula Center Mall. We have lived all over the state with his job, and we have taught sewing and repairs and recycling every community we've lived in. We've lived in the villages and Bethel and things like that. Since we've been here, I buy machines or people donate machines. We fix them, we teach people to use them, and then we gift the machines to them. We teach little kids to people in their 80s how to sew and how to tend to certain needs all the time with this program. And we've always funded it ourselves and found a way to make it happen. This weekend, we even did an event, and I have a picture of it. We did a free trunk show that encouraged lots of folks to come, and these are all the machines, and learn about sewing and learn about doing different things. And we've just been doing this over and over again with piecemealed machines. We donate all the fabric and the supplies, and we've been doing it for at least 30 years or so. I've been sewing and teaching sewing for probably about 42, 43 years. I've been sewing for over 50. We've done numerous volunteer programs, like we do Project Homeless, and we provide everything, and folks come in and they make hats and socks for the homeless folks. That's a big fun thing here. And we teach them how to do it, and we provide everything. And we've been using things that they bring in, their machines, but we're constantly just fixing machines and trying to keep them together and trying to teach, you know, 20 to 30 people how to use a different machine at a time. So it was mentioned to me by Sharon Hale, and she helps me, that this mini-grant happened, and we were hoping to buy machines so that everybody learns on the same machine, doing the same thing. We can teach everybody all at once and have the same results over and over, because it's a struggle to teach that many people in difference. We never charge a dime for it. We have provided thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars for things, like we did all the gowns and the masks and things like that during COVID, and we did over 10,000 masks during that time. I have taught sewing for free in Fairbanks, Glen Allen, Craig, Bethel, Anchorage, Klowak. And here, I haven't done it with any other schools, but I've done it with lots and lots of folks. I had a gentleman walk in the store yesterday. His name was Michael Smith, and I asked him afterwards, "Would you just write a little letter?" He walked in yesterday. He's new to the state, he doesn't have much money. He dropped his chainsaw, cut his pants and his jacket, and he didn't fix, he didn't have no way. So we sat him down yesterday and taught him how to use the machine, and he fixed his stuff and left. Didn't charge him anything. But he is so excited about getting a machine now. So we just want to continue to do that, but we just need some consistency instead of us always just buying whatever we can find and making it work. And that's what we was hoping for. I did some stupid, took a leap of faith, and I called Jane H., Bernina, and Real Sewing Back in Anchorage, because I want a machine that will have a warranty. And Real Sewing Back in Anchorage got back to us immediately. They sold us, we bought 13 machines. We paid for half of it in the hopes that this grant would pay for the other half. And we had these 13 machines set up this weekend for anybody that walked in the mall that wanted to use them, period. There was no strings attached, no nothing. And we just went ahead and did it, and we had a blast. And we had like four ladies that had never touched a sewing machine in their lives, and they were in their, I think in their mid-70s. So we want to continue that here, but for once, we would just like to have the same sewing machines. We're not asking for any other help with anything. We provide it, all the threads, the scissors, the fabrics, the everything. And I've done this forever. We just need help getting the sewing machines. Does anybody?
Any questions from the council? Okay, so I understand that all the, you already have the machines.
Yeah, I took a leap of faith. He went up and got them Wednesday, because we wanted to do this event, and we wanted it free, and we needed the machines, and we didn't have them. So, yeah, she gave me 30-day net, so we'll figure it out, but it would make our lives a lot easier, you know? Sometimes in a small business, you got to do it. And I'm passionate about this. So if it doesn't get approved, because, you know, the library, that's a pretty cool We'll find a way. But, yeah, we did. Went up and...
All right, thank you. Any, Mr. Carey?
Just again, ignorance. Where are you guys located?
Oh, in Peninsula Center Mall. Oh, and, you know, so we recycle all the time. People throw stuff away in the trash all the time. That's what this bag is made out of. This fabric on the back is from Nomar and Homer. That was in their trash, and I asked if I could buy their bin of fabric. That's what this is on the front. I've taught this class to folks, I've taught this shirt class to folks, these pants to folks that have either disabilities and cannot get pants on. I don't know if you guys know anybody that can't pull up their own pants. So you put long elastic in the bottom, and you can help get them up. We've put zippers in things so that if someone's in a chair, you can put it over them. We've just always done this, and we want to continue.
Mr. Chilson.
I just want to say thank you for all the efforts you're doing to support the community in learning this out there. This is really cool. I wasn't aware that this was even a thing that we had available. I appreciate the leap of faith that you've made with this, with getting the machines to make those available. And I know that we have a comparable grant application from the Soldatna Library friends that are trying to do the same thing, and they are looking for machines. So regardless of the outcome of this, I would... I'd love to see some kind of collaboration maybe come out of this, because...
Oh, heck, yeah.
Anything we can do to make this more efficient and just benefit the community would be great. So just, I feel a lot of positive energy in this. I appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the next on the list is Stacy Day, Peninsula Crime Stoppers. Stacy Day? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Well, if we have somebody for Stacy Day and Crime Stoppers on the phone for Zoom, press star nine, and we'll get started on your presentation.
Hi, can you hear me?
Good afternoon. Are you Stacy? From Peninsula Crime Stoppers?
I sure am. My name is Stacy Day, and I'm representing the Peninsula Crime Stoppers. And if you're not familiar with Peninsula Crime Stoppers, it encourages members of the community to assist local law enforcement agencies in the fight against crime by submitting tips. And one of the ways that tips can be submitted is on our, one of our mobile apps called P3 Tips. And that's basically the Peninsula Crime Stopper app. And Peninsula Crime Stoppers is seeking a grant in the amount of $1,000 to assist in funding the yearly fee for this application. And the benefit of that would be community involvement to continue to help solve crimes and even prevent crimes in progress, which provides a safer community.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Chilson.
I guess this is just kind of flushing out my own understanding of Crime Stoppers. Is this a local-only organization? Or are you a branch of a larger national organization?
The Peninsula Crime Stoppers is strictly, there's a national organization for Crime Stoppers, but Peninsula Crime Stoppers is specific to our community here in the communities of Nikiski, Kenai, Soldatna, Sterling, Clam Gulch, Namilchik, Anchor Point, Homer, Cooper Landing, Moose Pass, and Seward. And it's covered that region for the last 30-plus years.
Got it. And then my last question being, is I see that you'd be using this to cover the yearly service fees for this tip app. Can you clarify what the annual cost to maintain that is?
Yes, the annual cost is $3,200, and it's broken up into two months, October and April, and so $1,600 twice a year. So the $1,000 mini-grant that we are requesting would help cover some of that, and the rest is raised through fundraising efforts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Saying none. Thank you, Ms. Day.
Thank you.
We will now move on to one that we didn't hear from, and that would be Soldatna High School Wrestling Boosters Club. Anyone here from the Soldatna High School Wrestling Boosters Club? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
If anyone from the Soldatna High School Wrestling Boosters Club is on Zoom, please press star nine. So, Mr. Mayor?
Trenton Peak, are you here for the Soldatna High School Wrestling Boosters Club?
Trenton Peck is here. Trenton Peck is here to represent Soldatna Boosters Club.
Okay, you have five minutes to make a presentation.
Yes, we are a wrestling club that is here, Soldatna Whalers. We are here in town to raise money for the Soldatna So-Hi Wrestling Team, and we are looking for the $1,000 so we can support us with our, some of our travel, but also because we have not received new wrestling gear since I've been part of the club for the last 10 years. So we're looking for that $1,000 to help pay and supplement some of those fees that we're going to need to help to provide those wrestling uniforms.
Any questions from the council? Saying none. Thank you, Mr. Peck, for your presentation. And the final results on these will come out later at the council meeting tonight. Next one up is North Coast Designs. Anyone here from North Coast Designs? Anyone on our Zoom?
There's anyone on Zoom for North Coast Designs? Please press star nine to raise your hand, or if using the app, use the raise-your-hand function.
Give it another shot. North Coast Design, are you on Zoom? Okay, well, we'll end it there then with a response from North Coast Designs. Now, as I understand it, we do our scoring and pass this on to the city clerk. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, that would happen during the, addressing the action memo at the council meeting.
During the meeting, then?
Correct.
Okay. What if we did it now, then you would have all the scores tabulated and ready to go when we got to the council meeting?
Through the mayor, I believe that the intention of this is for it to be done in an open, public meeting as it was advertised. It was advertised through the action memorandum.
Okay, well, then we will end this work session and hold all of our score sheets and everything until the meeting, starting at 6 o'clock.